Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Sunday session of November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Donna, will you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Boden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Community Economic Development Director Jay Hill has information for us about land use regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's a riveting subject. Um, my plan tonight is to kind of start at the thirty thousand foot view and kind of crash until we're skimming across the top of the weeds, but not really getting into them. If we have more questions, we will. I'm happy to take them as uh as the presentation goes on or at the end either way. So uh, thank you for being here tonight. We're going to talk uh generally about just kind of planning. How does it work and how is it going to work over the next couple of years uh here in Shelton? And part of that uh is due to kind of the the planning hierarchy of laws. So we, a lot of what we do is enabled at the state level. Um, we have the State Environmental Policy Act, the Growth Management Act, the Shoreline Management Act, a whole bunch of regulations. There's more. The Coordinated Water System Planning Act, uh, you know, keeps going on and on and on. We've uh so a lot of what we do is uh governed or constrained or um required or requested or strongly suggested by the state. Um, and then that starts to filter down to the local level through uh other kinds of tools that are implemented. So there are often uh countywide planning policies within the county uh comprehensive plans. Um, and those are usually worked out in agreement between the cities and the counties. Um, and then each of the comprehensive plans uh themselves uh contain further subplans usually. Um, there are functional plans which are adopted as elements of the comprehensive plan. So um previously you guys have talked about uh the water and sewer comprehensive plans that are underway. There's the Parks and Recreation Parks Recreation Open Space Plan. Um, you know, these these fundamental subelements that go into the comprehensive plan and become part of it. Um, and so the the comp plan itself, when when we're talking about our efforts to um to revise our comp plan, the periodic update is what they call. Um, that is not necessarily the entirety of the document, but but kind of the framework that goes into it and setting the expectation for these future revisions of these other functional subarea plans. Um, and then after we've gone through kind of the hierarchy, the or the higher level uh kinds of documents, plans, policies, laws, then we implement that through our zoning code. Uh, so we say this is the kind of community we want to see. This is how we're going to get there by creating these ordinances, these standards, these requirements for development, for environmental protection, for health, housing, safety, and so on and so on. Um, and I I say zoning code, it some of the stuff will come through the municipal code as well. Um, it's not all entirely within our Title seventeen or nineteen twenty, any of our subdivision ordinances, things like that. There are, um, for example, like multifamily tax exemptions with their which are authorized under the state usually come in under um, you know, like the financial chapters of uh communities documents. So I say zoning code, but I I really kind of refer to the municipal code, but the zoning code is where the bulk of it will land. Um, and within that zoning code, um, we have our development standards, we have our policies and procedures for how we uh review and interpret applications and so on. Um, and then that eventually translates into the project level plans and entitlements. So when people are out there building in accordance with the regulations that the royalty, but the collective you have established for our community, um, they are implementing our comprehensive plan. And so it's important to remember as we're building these that we want something that is easy to understand um and very easy to implement because then um, you know, the the work gets done for us. Um, so the what I call the local planning cycle, um, it starts with a revision to the comprehensive plan and we start with uh allocating growth targets in some more um like urban jurisdictions like King County, Pierce County, so on. Um, they have a very specific process for um going through growth targets and buildable lands and things like that. Ours is a little less formal. Um, but basically the 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 summary of what we need to do is uh figure out what our growth is going to look like, you know, but what what is the trend line up, down, sideways, so on? Um, how much land do we have for various uses within our community? Do we have the infrastructure necessary to support the growth, the land, the uses, all those things that we've identified? And then we create policies to implement that development and to to help further that development along. And so that takes about two years to to kind of start from the scoping process and identifying, you know, what what do we want our community to be? What's the vision for the plan? What's the vision for the community? And then translating that into this policy development document, and then we go into the implementation phase of that, which is the zoning code revision. So we start with a code audit, um, where we go through our our code. We look at it for um, you know, what matches with our comprehensive plan, what matches with existing state laws that we need to catch up to, so on and so on. And um, we create policy consistency between the the state policies, our comprehensive plan, and then our our zoning code. We draft the code and then we implement the code through a series of ordinances which come to you folks. And then eventually we get to projects and those projects usually come in two forms. There's public infrastructure, which is our water towers, our pipes, our sewers, so on and so on. And then the development, which is utilizing that to help, you know, future or further the goals that we've established in the plan. Um, and so it it kind of looks like an arrow here, but it's 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 more like a circle, you know, it comes back to comp plan revision. Um, we're required by law to update them every ten years. That's been recently changed. It was eight years. They used to be due in June. Now they're doing December. So December twenty twenty-five is going to be the deadline for our plan to be fully adopted through council and um reviewed by um the State Department of Commerce and so on. So um, I would like to have it done by in the summer to early fall of twenty twenty-five. That way we've got time to get it through the review processes and we're not bumping up against any deadlines. Um, and so that process, it like I said, it's it's a two-year program and it's going to start soon. Um, I'm going to be coming here probably sometime after the the start of the uh new year with uh an outreach plan and kind of a scoping plan, like how are we going to do this? And how are we going to make sure that we have the community input and the kinds of community input from the people that we definitely want to hear from, you know? We we want to reach out to people who uh maybe haven't historically participated in the process um and people who um may have great ideas. Um, a big thing lately has been reaching out to school students and getting involved with like AP government classes or civics classes and things like that and getting them involved in creating a even sometimes like a youth steering council to help guide some of these things that are youth issues. We're talking about a ten-year plan duration and twenty to thirty years of development that comes out of it. A lot of them are going to be Sheltonites that are going to be sitting at this table later on. And so, you know, thi- this gives them a real opportunity to invest in a plan that is investing in their future. So um, that's something, just one of the, one of the things that I'll be wanting to to bring forward. Um, and then also the the code uh or sorry, the state law allows for an annual docking process. So if we create a comp plan and we need to make some tweaks to it later, or people come to us asking for tweaks, there's always the option to do this mid-cycle review. Um, and somebody comes and submits a comp plan amendment application and we bring that, you know, through the process, through staff uh to the council and and they can, they can request an amendment. Uh, we can also make our own amendments if we find that we
Who are they?
Uh, developers typically, um maybe, uh, I mean, there could be activist groups who want to, you know, see more environmental protection. There could be a you know, negotiated settlement with a like a tribal partner or a a county entity or something like that that affects how we do business and, you know, affect something within the comprehensive plan. So um, there's, there's always those opportunities um in uh but I've I've worked in other jurisdictions where the docket process was substantial. I mean, in in the city of Redmond, the annual docket was uh akin to running a comprehensive plan process every two years. Um, and so it was, it was very expensive. Um, I don't know to the extent that that's been used here, but I I don't think it has. So but i- it's always an option that we have. Um, so we can, we can say, well, we did this. We liked it, but we just need to make some tweaks to it to to make it uh meaningful in the way that we intended. Maybe. Pointing it at the right place or?
Oh, 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 no.
Sorry. Let's just go. Okay, uh, so like I said, required every ten years uh for a comprehensive plan, uh, we're due at the end of twenty twenty-five. There are required elements, uh, land use, housing, capital facilities, utilities, so on and so on. Um, we can also, if we're interested in something, make our own element. Um, and I I can't say what that would be necessarily, but if, you know, if somebody wanted uh I don't know, uh, a waterfront specific set of policies and they really wanted to buckle it into one element that didn't really, you know, maybe transcended a couple of different chapters or something. I'm I'm just making spitballing right now, but you could create your own element that that was representative of um, the the factors that that you consider important to your community. Um, and like I said before, this guides the development of the code. Um, and so the code implements the comp plan, um, and we also use policies and interpretations to supplement the code language. For example, when an ordinance gets passed, um, you folks tell us this is what we want the outcome to be, and then it's usually on staff to develop the application process or the um application materials and and um interpret how things are reviewed and approved. And there's a whole set of uh ways to do appeals and things like that. Um, but generally speaking, um, you know, it's it's set in code and then and then we interpret that code as best we can to affect the intent of the component. This is harder to see down here than it was on my screen, but I apologize, but striking a balance. Um, we want flexibility in our code. We want people to be actualized. People want to come in and try something innovative and try something new and build uh a real natural kind of feel to a community. So we want, you know, things that can be done through agreements and through, you know, that will achieve uh creativity and variety. But also we want consistency because we don't want to have every developer get treated differently or every property owner get treated differently. We don't want you know, somebody to get their permits in fourteen days and somebody to get theirs in a hundred and twenty days for the like the same type of application. We want consistency in our standards, in our review times, um, in our processes, so on and so on. And that's fair, not only fair, but it's also, you know, a constitutional obligation. We have to follow due process. Um, and so we do our best to make sure that we um hold the line as as close as we can to the code that has been created. But also making sometimes uh favorable interpretations to achieve a certain outcome. If that, um, you know, if it's legally defensible to do so, and we have, you know, the attorney's way in and we have, you know, a body of land use resources and lots and lots of professional experience in our department to try to make sure that we are making the right decision for the community. It shouldn't always come down to code says this, that's the end. Um, I mean, it it can be, um, but you know, in in very specific cases, we should, we should try to do what we can to achieve a better outcome. And like I said before, if if we've created a piece of code, it's not working. We've created something in the comprehensive plan. It doesn't work for that particular site or that particular property. We have the ability to go back and revise. I would love to get it right the first try. Let's let's do, let's aim for that, um, because it saves everybody time and effort. But if, you know, if if we need to fix something, we can go back and do that. Um, so the project level entitlements, these are uh the application of the code processes and a realization of the comp plan vision. And this is all of the the things that some of you may be more familiar with, you know, the building permits and site plan development. Uh, some of the things like development agreements, which we don't use very often here, but we can uh PUDs, planned unit developments, which we're currently working with our code uh advisory committee to revise and 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 make more useful and more clear and consistent. Um, and so those entitlements um by the developers and by the property owners are are what is furthering the goal of our community. So you won't see this in our code currently, but it is my hope that you will see it soon. Um, so we have four general types of applications. Um, and I want to break them out within our code and be very clear on how the process works for each application type instead of, if you look at our code currently, we have a lot of the process information in each application type. So you have to go to the conditional use permit application to see all of the details on how that works, and it works very similarly to a variance, but the variance has its own little quirks and whatever. And so I want to streamline all of that. So they're they're handled in generally the same way, same noticing deadlines, same um processes for review and posting and things like that. And that way there's consistency, there's expectations by people who are developing and and improving their properties and whatnot, that there's uh, you know, just this consistency in the process, um, you know, and what you'd be able to set your watch by it. Like we have the Permit Streamlining Act, which requires us to have a thumbs up or thumbs down on a project from a hundred and twenty days after the notice of completion. So if if somebody has a complete product or a project application and they have submitted all the materials required by our code, state law, whatever, we have a hundred and twenty days from that date that it was a complete application to to get that decision handed back. Um, and so making sure that our application processes are as streamlined as possible um to avoid any internal churn, to avoid back and forth with the applicant, to all of that kind of stuff. We we want to approve legal and conforming applications, um, but we want to do so quickly. So we start with administrative ministerial. Those are the type one applications. Those are ones they're a building permit. There's not really conditions to it. It's pretty standard. You come in across the counter, you get that particular application, just there's, there's no discussion, no public notice, no anything. It's just, you know, that that is a very, very simple type of application. Then the next type is a little bit more difficult. That's the administrative discretionary. These are ones that often under state law, we have some kind of noticing requirement or we have um CIPA or something like that where we we have a a deeper level of review and compliance that's required. Again, these are administrative. These are usually handled at the staff level, um, meaning myself or or one of our staff will be the one that handles that. Type three is quasi judicial. These are hearings examiner applications, um, and those include like preliminary plats and um, I have a list of all the different types of applications on the next slide. Um, and then the last one is legislative, and those are the things that come to you. Those are the the big policy setting kinds of ones, comp plans, rezones, um, currently special use permits, which we'll also talk about, um, and then, you know, a couple of other ones. So this slide, um, you might be able to see on your computers. If you're looking at them, it may be very difficult to see, uh, because so we have a lot of application types. Um, and again, like a lot of these are required by varying components of state law, our code, our code implementing state law, so on and so on. So we we have to have these types of applications, but you can see everything from address requesting and FEMA elevation certificates and sign permits. Those are all ministerial. If you meet our code requirements, pretty, pretty standard, just happens. Um, the administrative discretionary, um, those are like you can see more like the shoreline kinds of things, CIPA determinations, things that require a little bit more uh review. Um, you'll see I have two things highlighted in green here. One is a minor variance under administrative discretionary and one is a rezone implementing the comp plan under quasi judicial. The green ones are things that we don't have currently that we would like to see implemented um over the next couple of years, whether that comes along before the complaint, with the complaint or after the complaint. We we want to get these in. Um, a minor variance would be, you know, I, because of my site condition or because of the way my house was built, I can't build my garage without going into my setback one foot. You know, and instead of saying, no, you can't build anything because one foot is a bridge too far. We can say, well, if you meet these standards, you know, you're not blocking anybody's view. You're not emitting any toxicous toxic, toxic or noxious fumes. Um, I made a word there. Uh, um, if you're, if you're not doing those things, then, you know, perhaps, you know, you can be granted a minor variance in in that kind of a situation. And I've worked in a lot of jurisdictions where there was a minor variance process and it was very useful and and uh you send postcards to the neighbors and most people don't really care. Like, oh, somebody wants to build a shed. I'm okay with that, you know? And so the other one is the rezones implementing the comp plan. Um, so the the future land use map of the comprehensive plan is where we want to be in the future. And I, it's my recommendation in the in in the future that that we have this future land use map and we allow people to rezone their properties in accordance with the comp plan, um, as it becomes an appropriate time for them to do so, instead of us just getting done with the comp plan and then being like, all right, we're just going to rezone the whole city and see what happens. It'll be chaos, dogs and cats living together, you know, like that kind of stuff. Like it'll be, you know, uh, it's it's not a situation that we want to get into. But right now, if somebody wants to come in and make a rezone that would be in accordance with our new comprehensive plan, they would have to come all the way to council this body and go through the legislative process to do what we already asked them to do. And uh, I feel like that's kind of owners and and not the greatest of governance. Now, that being said, it's not my decision to make. I'm going to make the suggestion to you guys later, more formally in the form of an ordinance. Um, and hopefully we'll have that opportunity to have that discussion. But um, I think if people are doing something that we have asked them to do, we should be supporting that and making it as easy as possible. Um, the last thing that I have highlighted, I mentioned uh in the type four legislative permits, um, or legislative call them applications. Um, those are the the big kinds of like council decisions, the really policy setting decisions. We have a whole thing called special use permits and uh I'm not a hundred percent, you know, like versed on what it all includes, but um it requires the special use permits to be approved here after being heard by the hearing examiner with the hearings examiner making a recommendation to the council, even though it's a permit very similar to the conditional use permits that would have been approved quasi judicially by the hearings examiner. So I feel like it's an extra step. Um, and Jeff and I have talked about this and we we hope that, you know, when the time comes as well, we'll bring uh an ordinance forward and ask for the permission to um, you know, move that back to a type three kind of application. Just let the the hearings examiner make that kind of a decision accordant, in accordance with all of the proper noticing and um, you know, the state guidelines and all that kind of stuff. Yes.
I have a question. The minor variance. We don't have that in play. So I'm thinking of that. You know, the house up on the hill, Eric, you remember a few years ago, where the guy wanted to build the slope, the slope. Remember? You don't remember, do you remember that?
I remember, and I have the same one, but go ahead.
And I thought we had him. We just case by case on that.
Uh, in some cases, and we should not be, as Jay's been talking about, we want to be clear, consistent, apply the rules, the same rules to everybody when they come in so that they, there is an expectation of what you will receive if you meet the permit requirements. But the minor variances, Jay said, I've seen it work well in other places and usually you tie it to a numerical standard. So uh, you say if you need a variance of twenty percent of or less than American standard, then it's administrative. People in the general area are still notified and there is an opportunity to move uh into a a more robust process. Uh, if there's objections to it, but typically it's very similar to what Jay said. You got a five-foot setback. You don't have enough room for the separations between your house and your uh property line uh to get that shed in that five feet, but you need one additional foot. Most people are going to be okay with that and there, there's no it's not necessary unless there's an objection in my mind for it to go to a public hearing. Things like that, but they're very, they're minor. They're not anything that's major at all.
Any other questions here before I move on? Okay, great. Um, so our application process right now is it it's pretty much the same type of application process as you would have uh in any other jurisdiction that that that's planning across the Western US. Um, we have application intake where, you know, often we've met with people for more complex projects. We meet with people in advance to try to help them with level setting and project design and things like that. Um, otherwise we are willing to take in an application from anybody, whether we've had a pre-sub or not. Um, and then at that point, it gets routed out to the various uh departments for their review, typically planning, public works. Um, and we'll be looking for, you know, adherence to the zoning codes, we'll be adherence to the the stormwater standards, all the, all the different things. We develop um, a bunch of uh comment letters and pull them all together. Um, and then we uh during the the time that we're doing that review, we do our CIPA noticing. Um, and then uh we issue any required notices, you know, posting notices on site for certain applications or, you know, posting in the paper if that's required, so on and so on. Uh, some of our decisions have to be posted with ecology or Department of Commerce, just depends on the myriad of project types that we have to deal with on a regular basis. If I were to make a flow chart of everything, it would be dizzying and is dizzying. Um, uh, and then we come to our decision. Um, and then after the decision, if there is an aggrieved party, whether that's the applicant didn't get the outcome that they wanted or uh an adjoining property owner or interested party or whatnot that also didn't get an outcome that they were looking for, then there's the whole appeal process through the hearings examiner through uh superior court, depends on the type of application, but there's, there's a a variety of ways of appeal, um, again, in interest of keeping people's due process rights. I'm gonna hit it again, because it jumps on me. God. There we go. It's mocking me. I, Donna is probably playing jokes on you right there. Um, so general review timeframes for our type two to type four processes. So um again, the ministerial ones, those are, you know, people come in, we can do them, sometimes do them across the counter. Sometimes it takes a few days, but they're, they're, they don't have the same level of review because we don't have to do CIPA or public noticing or things like that. So um, this is for the type four to type, or sorry, type two to type four processes. And really um, there's a whole bunch of exceptions for the type four processes. Like if somebody comes in for a comprehensive plan uh update or amendment request, um, and we have a docketting process, we don't have to immediately process that. We can tell them to wait until the next docket and so on. I mean, so there's, there's different exceptions to some of these rules and those are laid out in state code. Um, but generally speaking, somebody brings us an application. We have twenty-eight days to tell them your application is complete or your application is deficient. It's missing these items. Please resubmit. Soon as they resubmit, we get another twenty-eight days to review. Everybody looks over it again, compares the previous comments, then you submit it all, says okay, this is this is good. This is complete. This can move on through the process. At that point, we notice. Um, the notice also wildly depends. Um, fourteen days is kind of standard. Um, some shoreline uh permits require either twenty-one or thirty days and really depends on the exact specific type of the application. I have to constantly go back and look into the book to make sure I'm doing exactly the right one, because I never want to get so complacent that I'm like, yeah, it's twenty-one days. And then totally mess up for the applicant. Like, so I'm I'm very, very by the book when it comes to that to make sure that we're, we're, you know, making sure that the the applicant's investment in their uh, you know, architecture and their permit fees and everything is is being well protected. Um, and then, like I said, for these uh generally, we have to have the hundred and twenty days from uh the notice of complete application.
So can you uh mention after they give the notice, the conclusions, a little bit about vested?
Uh, about the best, best thing?
Yeah.
Well, okay, uh, so at the time that applications are noticed as complete, um, they are, as as Jeff just mentioned, uh, considered vested under the law. So whatever application standards were in place on the day that they received that application or that we we issued the completeness notice, that they're, they're in there, they're locked in. So we have to be very careful to make sure that we do our review very well within that twenty-eight days. And and it doesn't mean that we have to review the project for all of its you know, uh, compliance with the code or that it's a good project or anything like that. We just need to make sure it is complete because once it's complete, it's locked in and they use whatever standards. And so if those standards change, if we adopt a new building code, if we make a comprehensive plan rezone, if we do new changes to the local stormwater manual or the local shoreline management program in that time, they're vested under the old one. Um, and so it it's important to make sure that we very clearly identify the date because some of these projects can go on for years and years and years and um it can come back to, you know, what day were they vested? What application standards were they applied under? In some cases, it's beneficial for the applicant to withdraw and resubmit. Maybe something became more lenient or easier or there's new flexibility under state law, or there's a new program that they want to apply for, so on and so on. Generally speaking, people want to vest because standards usually don't get easier over time. Um, but sometimes, sometimes they do, or sometimes, like I said, you know, the when the multifamily tax exemption program uh came out under state law, a lot of people wanted to take advantage of that and they didn't care if they were vested. They wanted a new application that they could get the MFT under. So, you know, things like uh, any other highlights that you want me to hit?
No, I just, I I think the only thing, other thing that I would mention is be very careful about uh code changes and how often you change the code. Because if you're looking back five versions uh beyond, uh, you know, if you change the code five times between when a project's missed building permits and it's invested, it's very difficult to kind of figure out which uh regulations applied to this project because it was vested on this date when you go back through all the versions. So it's uh important to kind of consider those holistically and do it once a year, maybe uh with uh code changes and code revisions.
Is it, is this documented, this comp plan where we would address affordable housing, workforce housing for the future?
Uh, we, we very well can. Um, you're not required to use that as your only avenue. Um, but there is a required housing element. Um, and and that one's required by the state. Um, and that's where most people do address their affordable housing policies and setting up kind of the standards for what they want to see. Um, that's one way you could do it. You could, um, as long as it's not in violation of the existing comp plan, you can create your own affordable housing policies and and codes and things like that. Now you could amend the comp plan under the annual docket um to do that kind of thing. There's, there's a lot of ways to do that, um, functional plan, so on and so on. Um, since we have this opportunity with the comp plan coming up and since we um Mason County just had their housing needs assessment done and since we're hopefully going to be sharing some resources uh with the county, I I do think it's a great time to address that um as a community. Um, some of the things we can get out in front of, um, like, for example, if the council wanted to adopt a multifamily tax exemption program, um, you know, barring some, some changes we might need to make to our downtown zoning to allow for something like that, but um we we could, we could, you know, effect an ordinance and have that program within the next year or even before the comp plan, um, if if that was something you guys were interested in. So there's there's always, you know, the ability to to get out in front of the plan or we can let the plan drive the process either way that you guys want to go.
Yeah, because I think you and I were talking at the barbecue about um, big developments coming in with more with hundreds of homes and having a percentage be affordable or?
Yes, um, yeah, that's called a mandatory inclusionary and um, we can set the standards. It's pretty common to say, you know, ten percent of all units above a certain size of project are required to be maintained at affordability of, you know, eighty percent of area median income or something. Um, you, we can set the standards, we can set the numbers. None of those are necessarily prescribed in state law. Um, we can do what fits right with with Shelton. Um, and there's ways um that other jurisdictions have gotten around kind of like the taking issue of, you know, requiring a set aside affordable housing unit. Uh, it's by giving a bonus affordable unit. So if a project was coming in at ten units and that was all they were going to build and they were required to set aside one, you give them a bonus unit in exchange for building the affordable. So now they're building eleven, which makes it a slightly larger project. But we've gotten the benefit. We haven't taken anything from the developer. The developer actually makes more money usually by doing this. It it's been generally seen as a a win-win-win. Um, and when I was working in Redmond, we used this program, our mandatory inclusionary very extensively. We built probably thousands of affordable units as of all the development was hitting downtown Redmond. So, thank you. So, thank you.
You want to have any questions, comments for Jay?
I have another question.
Sure.
Back to the beginning where we talked about public infrastructure and then private development. It's kind of, they go together, don't they?
They, they do, but it, it is a chicken and an egg process. Um, and so, uh, if we don't have the development where we can't currently, we can't really pay for a lot of the infrastructure we want because we want the developers to pay for that infrastructure. However, if the infrastructure isn't here, we can't attract the developers because there's so much uncertainty. For example, if they have to build a water reservoir, pressure zone improvements and all of this stuff before they can even break ground on their project, that's a huge investment and given economic turmoil, given market conditions and, uh, you know, volatility and financing problems and all kinds of stuff, that, that may not be something that they're willing to bite off. Uh, so in the, you know, kind of the age old, you know, chicken and egg thing, I prefer to where we can, you know, let's, let's just be the chicken and we'll lay an egg. Like we will, we will build, um, the infrastructure to attract the kind of development that our city wants to see. Um, at, at the level that we can, um, I know financially it can be difficult to do so, but I consider it more like an investment in the future of your community. Cause without making those big infrastructure investments, uh, it's really, really hard to get somebody to, to put their millions of their own dollars in if they can't trust that the community is behind it.
Well, we tried that for a developer and it hasn't panned out. You know, if you build it, they will come and they didn't.
Yeah, you, you can secure things with development agreements. There's, I'm, I'm not saying anybody did anything wrong or you know whatnot. I'm, uh, there's, there's ways, I think it can definitely be done better. Um, and fortunately, at least I have experience with some of those things. So, you know, during my 10 year old, do the best I can, um, to, to make sure that those things are, you know, moving kind of as parallel as they can. Um, but yeah, it, it, it's challenging. You don't want to build a bunch of infrastructure that nobody ever uses. But also if you don't build it, they won't come. Um, that's just, I mean, unless you have, you know, Microsoft in your backyard or SpaceX in your backyard or some, some huge reason for people to be there, like it, it's not a, it's not a low hanging fruit. It's very, very difficult for them, so.
So we, we do the public infrastructure for a big project, but then the private development can come in and use that also.
Correct. So when they come in, they pay the general facilities charges. And when they pay the, those GFCs, assuming that we've right sized our general facilities charges, that, uh, basically replenishes the, the funds that we expended to build that development, uh, or the, the infrastructure. And so, so let's say it costs us the equivalent of $10,000 to build a new water tank for a neighborhood. And then when they come in, they pay that $10,000 per unit in GFCs. It's a wash for the city. We didn't lose money on the deal. We broke even or maybe made money on the deal.
Add a bunch of zeros to that water tank.
What was that? I was, I was spitballing. That was not a bid, uh. Uh, so yeah, there's, there's a lot of opportunity, um.
Kind of a circle, isn't it?
It is, and you, you have to decide if you're willing to take the risk to, to inject money into the circle. Otherwise it, it stops spinning. But once you, if you make the right investments, that it just spins and speeds up, you know?
Okay.
It's also a big part of the comp plan is deciding what type of uses you want in what area. And that dictates, uh, what type of infra, infrastructure you need to build to attract those investors.
All right, thank you.
Just looking forward to seeing the process get started. Uh, your comments on Friday were well taken, you know, the visioning piece, you know, you just said it now, investing in the future of our community. I think that's the conversation that more than anything, um, is, is going to be the good conversations to, to have just because, you know, we, we hear a lot and we talk a lot about code and permitting timeline and complaints around all of that. Um, but, uh, it's been like almost five years and we haven't had any real conversation around the vision and, and looking forward to having those discussions and making smart investments with our money, not just making cap hazard investments. So yeah, I'm looking forward to having, having that conversation, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I look forward to your participation too. This is, you know, it's, it's a community process, but it's very much going to be led by the folks sitting at this table over the next two years. And so, you know, your energy is going to be critical in, in moving this forward. And, you know, I know the citizens of our community are, are not typically like flush with wealth and really excited to give their money to the government. But, you know, if we can show that the rising tide will, will raise all ships, you know, and, and I, I think that we can really make a compelling story of why the economic development is, is going to be a stimulus to this community instead of a cost.
Yeah.
Um, and it'll benefit people instead of, you know, just being a waste. Um, we do it right though, and we do it smart. Um, we do it methodically and we do it with lots and lots of data. And, you know, it's, it can be an emotional, um, issue. I mean, there's going to be people who want to see things change in a certain way or not change at all, or, you know, people who don't want to spend another dime, people who want to see that investment, it's, it's going to be, you know, a lot of community voices. But, um, you know, having you folks help with the tenor of that is going to be absolutely essential. And I look really forward to working with you on this.
Yes, I, I definitely love the idea of, uh, downtown multi-units and, uh, density down there and getting people walking the streets and stuff and using our parks and.
Yep.
We talked about raising the limit of the, of the buildings, the county raised theirs to 55.
We can talk about all of those pieces and kind of the policy statement, uh, would be something along the lines of, you know, increase opportunities for, uh, a more walkable and, uh, friendly downtown, something like that, right? Uh, and then the way that we go about doing the code development is, well, how do we do that? We move buildings closer to the street like they are on the South Sutter Railroad. We have a little bit wider sidewalks, we require awnings, uh, we've raised the height limit. So you create the population density that will get you to where, get you to, uh, achieve that policy. That's kind of what Jay was mentioning when we take your policy guidance, translate it into code requirements and then, uh, make sure, do the best we can to make sure that, that the outcome, uh, that is produced by those code requirements meets your policy outcomes. If it doesn't, we come back and we relook at it and see what we can tweak.
That's good. Any other questions for Jay or Jeff? No, it's, council having a new item for discussion? Then this meeting is adjourned at 6:30, 7:00 PM.